At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, here this evening. We do have an agenda before us or changes to that agenda. Lauren Deitz, EDA Director.
Thank you. Rebound Partners has requested to cancel tonight's public hearing for their tax abatement request. The development team feels as it's the best interest for the development and the city to take some additional time to finalize the project. This decision comes based on current and projected market conditions, and the hearing will be scheduled and hope will be rescheduled in hopes of final -- sorry. We scheduled this hearing in hopes of finalizing the assistance plan for the project prior to the year end, but the EDA and developer are planning to reevaluate and reschedule at a later date when we feel the project is ready to come forward.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren?
Thanks, Lauren.
So that agenda item number two, that public hearing will be removed from this agenda. There's also been a request by EJ Moberg to move an agenda item number six off of the consent agenda and move that to the first item of new business. Okay? Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on December 12th. The council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig to accept the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote.
My vote screen isn't up. Thank you, Stephen.
What's the voting? And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. They include consider authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property, consider the approval of the Marshall area senior citizens rental agreement with Lutheran Social Services lease agreement, the acceptance of a donation made to the Adult Community Center for FY 2023, consider the resolution calling for public hearings on street reconstruction, or that's the one we're going to move, and then agenda number seven would be the consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda, which would be three, four, five, and seven, that any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda to approve those, the remaining items on the consent agenda. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Okay.
We'll move then to agenda item number six. This is to consider the resolution calling for a, well, calling for public hearings on the street reconstruction plan, tax abatements, and issuance of the general obligation bonds with us tonight Director of Administrative Services, EJ Moberg.
Thank you. Good evening. The reason I had this asked this to be pulled from the consent agenda is that I have updated amounts for the street reconstruction project in working with Baker Tilly. We have, as a staff, at the staff level, determined that we should not only bond for our local share, including the special assessments, but also for the wastewater and surface water portions of the project. And this is just for the South Whitney Street project. In conversations last week, we decided to move to the 2 million threshold. When updated information from Baker Tilly this week was just over that threshold, so we'd like to, I'd like to move it for purposes of the resolution and the published notice to move to 2,100,000. That's the only change I proposed from what was there. So the reason we're starting this again is just the 24 bonding process with an earlier schedule with some of the items on this, specifically the snow removal equipment building to be considered earlier. We need the money earlier, so that starts this process. So if the resolution is approved, the information gets published as scheduled, we would then have the public hearing on these on January 9th at the next council meeting.
And you're dealing with estimates at this point in the resolution?
It is just estimates at this point, yes.
Questions for EJ? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the resolution that would call for the public hearing with the updated number in the resolution.
I move the resolution calling for the public hearing.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
I have a question for our attorney on this. Since my house is directly affected, should I abstain from this vote?
So if you feel as it's a, just a general assessment, correct? Right?
I just clarified that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number eight, consider the acceptance of donations made to the Marshall Parks and Recreation Department for FY 2023. With us tonight from the Parks Department is Preston Stensherrud. Preston?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just here tonight to formally accept and kind of recognize the donations we received. And I call it Parks and Recreation, meaning parks, pool, recreation, and Red Baron versus listing out four different areas. But for the 2023 year, again, very generous community, not only families, but business, people that help support our facilities and our needs. So I just kind of wanted to highlight a few of them. The Inclusive Play, which we finished and kind of opened the newest one at Independence Park in August, and we've ordered the equipment for Justice Park. That'll be here the first week in January. I didn't think we'd get it installed this winter, but if it keeps going like it is, maybe we will. We'll see what happens here with the nice weather, but otherwise that'll go on in 2024 in the spring or summer. But overall, about $61,000 in donations towards inclusive playgrounds. We have an additional $45,000 committed for following years by some of these donors. And then we also got a grant for $26,000 just to keep this momentum moving forward and with the ultimate goal of having inclusive components in every one of our parks. So it's really gained a lot of steam, and it's just good to have that community support. On the first one, we started with two pieces. Independence has three. Justice Park has numerous musical things, so we just keep adding, making them bigger because of this. So the second one kind of down was part of the Independence Park when we did the concrete improvements in the trails. That's part of the last portion of MABAs commitment to improvements up around the baseball fields for the concrete work that was all gravelled before. The next one down would be kind of some of our initial commitments towards improvements at Legion Field as part of our plan to improve user experience and just doing some updates there. As you know, Legion Field is very well respected, but also hasn't had a lot of improvements done for 30 to 40 years. So we did get the backstop, the new backstop is, was ordered and is here. We just couldn't figure out any contractors to get it installed, thinking winter was going to turn to winter and not stay nice. So we'll be working at doing that along with some dugouts, bathroom concession stand type of stuff in the fall of 2024. We also have an additional commitment there, not noted here, for an additional $50,000 to $60,000 donation. That'll be forthcoming for that project. The next one is a whole kind of list there, but where we put in an 18, we have the baskets in, but we put in an 18-hole disc golf course at Independence Park that Jordan Schrader kind of was the person that brought it forward as the idea. So we sold each hole as a sponsorship. That's why you see a bunch of $500 amounts. And then the city's also going to have a hole that'll, each basket will get branded with the proper colors and stuff that the people want. So that we'll finish that up in 2024. Also with tee pads, there'll be signage and then kind of a map of the whole disc golf course, too. It's also on a nationally recognized app, so when you look for disc golf courses anywhere in the United States, Independence Park will show up on there and it'll tell you how far the holes are and stuff like that. So kind of cool, and we look to start doing some tournaments and leagues out there, too. So.
And the baskets are installed?
Yep, yep, they're out there. So people have been using it. I get messages from people that live over there, like, yeah, it's December and people are out playing disc golf, you know? So it's good to see that it's getting used, and I think it'll be really popular once it's fully done. So that Upper Sioux Baseball, this was new this year, so the Upper Sioux Baseball's kind of like equivalent to like MABA here, but for the Grand Falls, Montevideo, Clarkfield area. They do their whole kind of in-town league there, and then they brought all of their youth here for tournaments for several nights, I can't remember if it was two or four, at our amateur sports center in Brett. Their president just said how thankful all those people were, and it's the best decision they've ever done. He's already committed to coming back next year. They took a gate fee to help offset some costs of providing umpires and stuff, and they just had some funds left over. And he said, I just want you to have this and put back into the facility. So however it's needed. But it was just good, and then that brought in all those people and right at that supper time. So it probably did a lot of business for Marshall and the businesses, too. So it's just a good, something new he offered and just kind of spirit of cooperation, and it worked out well for them and it works out good for us. The next one is just, we continue to sell bricks, benches at Memorial Park. It just keeps adding, the racks are slowly filling up, and this will just kind of, as improvements come up, just goes into the Memorial Park fund for whatever that might be. But we get calls. I got a call from someone that is building a memorial park, too, that is down in Iowa, and he said he's toured 40 to 50 of these around the Midwest and even down through Colorado. And he's asking for a lot of our stuff and what we've done because he likes it so much. He just does very well laid out. He loves the racks. He loves what we've done and just the location and everything. So it's kind of cool knowing out of all those out there that ours is kind of recognized by them as building one to kind of model it after. Next is just numerous donations for recreation. This just kind of goes towards equipment purchases, like the VFW one. We bought a bunch of new helmets for the football program. They have a 10-year lifespan. The other ones are some jerseys and just kind of miscellaneous equipment needed to operate. Next, the Mahoney Real Estate. They helped with the aquatic center when we had the pool party, and we had ling and dairy there for ice cream. Morgan paid for the first $400 worth of ice cream that was given out there for free. So it was just a nice help kickoff and helped us kind of promote the pool and as we prepared for the vote stuff. So the, I think it's the last one, would be just for out at the Red Baron. If you guys are familiar with our, where like the players entrance is and then the main entrance, there's kind of that grass area in the corner. Next year, we plan to put in kind of a little paver walkway through there and then kind of like a little plaza, simple plaza area with some landscaping and trees. So these are donations we've received thus far to go to that, and there'll also be a bench. So like when kids are waiting for their parents and stuff, right now, there's really no place to go, just kind of stand outside. So and it just, it'll make it a little bit more welcoming right in that corner. So and we got a couple more donations on this since I did this already, so we'll have to come back and get those added. So but that'll, that'll just be forthcoming in 2024, too. So lots of things in the works. Like I said, very thankful for all the generosity of our community, and it just allows us to improve our facilities and continue to keep moving forward. So overall, about $160,000 in donations, and then we are also awarded over, or nearly 600,000, things like $592,000 in different grants for projects that we'll be doing, too. So very successful year and just thankful for all the support.
Thank you, Preston. The, not only are we very, very grateful for the, all of the donors, we're also thankful for your efforts in coordinating good projects that, that people really want to be part of. So thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other input from the council?
Thank you very much.
Now, is there a motion to, for the acceptance of the donations?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay. Agenda number nine is the Legion Field Stormwater Improvement Project Phase Two. We have a change order to consider, the third and final change order, as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request. Jason, Jason Anderson, City Engineer, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Phase two improvements included a new pipe crossing of the railroad tracks by the concrete plant and conveying the water across the tracks to a new dry pond in the Parkway Edition Neighborhood. Project was done successfully and on time, and included in the packet, you've got the final reconciling change order and the final pay request number three. Staff's recommending to make the final payment of $146,410.61 tonight. Project ended up slightly under budget. Original contract was just under $704,000, and this final payment puts us just under $700,000. We would recommend to make final payment on the project.
And there was, was it one storm event that just after it concluded, so it was tested and worked well?
Yeah, worked well. Couple of foot of water in the pond. It did what it was supposed to do, and we think it'll be a nice project going forward.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I would happily make that motion to save some money.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Jason, I'll have a question for you. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. For the council and the public, the, so as we have a few minutes here, do you want to update the council on the next phase? And I believe phase three is the final phase?
Yeah, correct. So we did a study, I believe it was maybe 2018 or 2019, that identified these three projects. This is phase two, as we mentioned. Phase three would be railroad ditch conveyance improvements east of Legion Field Road, where you can see on the map where Legion Field Road is and the railroad crossing. It would be working on that ditch, going to the north and the east, putting a new pipe crossing in as you get near Turkey Valley, and then doing piping or ditching to convey water north of the Unique Opportunities apartment complex and put in another ponding improvement in there. When all these projects are done in conjunction, we solve a lot of drainage issues in a pretty big area.
And that'll be in 2025?
Yeah, it's not, we've been kind of sliding and around in the CIP to try to help manage the surface water utility funds. Right now, I believe you're correct, it's slotted for 2025. We'll continue to try to fit that in where it makes sense. We've got a lot of expense coming up in College Drive, but, you know, with the College Drive project in 2025 and 2026. But thankfully, the raised grant that we received should help offset some of the surface water costs as well. So we're still kind of playing with numbers, and as those continue to come in, we'll, we'll hopefully be able to hone in on a construction year for phase three.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any other questions for Jason? Thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number 10, which is to consider adoption of the ordinance regarding the public use of cannabinoid products and prohibition of smoking cannabinoid and tobacco products in city parks and city recreational facilities. I'll call on Pam Whitmore, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So last meeting, I had provided an overview of these ordinances. There are actually three ordinances, one new ordinance and two amendments to existing ordinances. And so I won't go into detail again unless the council has questions, but as a reminder, this is mirroring the prohibition of use that was passed by the county through their ordinance so that it makes it less confusing for residents. So it's prohibiting all types of smoking in parks, public parks and recreational facilities, and then puts limits on use for just the cannabinoid products in the parks as well, with the exception of different permitted events and that are allowed by the Office of Cannabis Management and some internal permitting. That also has an amendment to the existing ordinances regarding where youth go for entertainment and dancing and not allowing the cannabinoid products to be sold to unauthorized folks and also with respect to intoxication on streets, just aligning it with what's the same as liquor. So with that, I would recommend the council consider these for approval. If that is the desire of the council, I would recommend, as you noticed on the agenda, there is an ordinance related to the summary publication. So whatever motions made, if it's a motion for both the approval of the ordinance and to be able to publish these by summary, that would be wonderful.
Okay, thank you, Pam. The, and I know this has been considered several times by the Legislative Ordinance Committee. I don't know if there's any comments from Legislative Ordinance Committee.
We did go over this three, four months. We worked on this, and we worked with Jim Marshar, Public Safety, or Chief of Police, and we believe this is a good ordinance. It does not limit what private business can do on their patios, and that was a concern of ours, but it does eliminate it out of public spaces. So we believe it's a very good ordinance.
And, Mr. Mayor, I also will add the council can expect to see a repeal of the interim ordinance that prohibited use, complete use across the city if these are adopted. We'd see that in January.
Very good. Are there any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion for the ordinances as well as a summary for publication.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. So then we'll move to the next agenda item, agenda item number 11, and this is the introduction of, of the amendments to the interim cannabis prohibition ordinance. Once again, Pam, I'll turn to you as city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So this, as the council may recall from last week, this suggested amendment to an existing interim ordinance that prohibits the retail sales and commercial sales of cannabinoid products, both higher and lower level, and also prohibits manufacturing, testing, transportation, distribution, all of that, while we study and learn from the Office of Cannabis Management what's going to happen with respect to that and with giving the city the opportunity, based on what direction we're getting from the state, what kind of zoning and registration we can do with respect to these commercial businesses for both lower and higher level products, with the exception of, of allowing, we had allowed the retail sale in our municipal liquor because they have the experience with IDing and following those processes with the state and inspections. So at the end of the last council meeting, there was discussion about a business in town that is a brewery and the ability to do some type of limited type of manufacturing. So at the end of that meeting, council without, had, had made, had given me the direction, had asked me if it was possible. I had answered, yes, it's legally possible, so had given the direction of wanting to see what an amendment would look like. We did some work, staff did a lot of great work as far as studying this type of manufacturing and what that means for, it's not a seed to type sale type manufacturing. We're having the planting, so you wouldn't have the, some of those odor concerns and some of those other concerns with some of the manufacturing that's, or the noise that's coming up with some of these studies with respect to manufacturing as it is really, from how I understand it, extracting and infusing beverages with a liquid that's already there and transporting it outside of the jurisdiction to another company that would be selling it. So based on that information, we, you have in front of you a limited amendment to the interim ordinance that would allow just that, that infusion of beverages in distilleries and breweries and then being transferreded out of the jurisdiction at this point. This has not gone through LNO for the council's information, and with that, I'm open for questions.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Thank you for your work on this. Questions?
Well, I don't have a question, just have a comment. I think we should, and not that I'm trying to stop business, but I think we should take the correct channels on how this is done and take it through LNO and, and visit through that way and vet it through that way. I don't think it's appropriate because of business, and I think of another business that's complaining about our sign ordinance. We do this for, for one business, they come and say, well, let's change our sign ordinance. I think we should take the step, the correct steps, go through LNO, have that vetted by LNO, make a recommendation to the council, and then take it from there instead of trying to piecemeal in this together. The other ordinance that we passed tonight, it took us three, four months. Does this have to take that long? No. I don't see this as an emergency because we put this in place a year ago, this emergency. We have done nothing with it. So I think this is a time to vet it, get it taken care of, but I do not believe this is right to introduce this without taking the correct channels that is set up by our city.
That's past practice, that's a practice, not something that's set up in charter.
Correct. And I, I do understand, but I think we should stick with our practices, what we do, because that makes the city look more transparent.
And do we believe that taking it to the Legislative Ordinance Committee will affect any change to the proposal?
I can't answer that question because one of the members is not here, and we have not really seen it or vetted it. That question cannot be answered until it goes to LNO.
The action tonight is for the introduction. Could the, if it is going to Legislative Ordinance Committee, would they be able to convene prior to January 9th?
I believe, yes, we could have a meeting before January 9th and have it introduced January 9th or a recommendation to have it introduced, whatever comes out of it. I do believe that could be.
The introduction would be tonight. Consider.
I think it should be, before it's introduced, I think it should be vetted through LNO. I think by changing our practice is not good visuals for the city. I think we should stick to the practices we have and do it that way and make sure we vet this right instead of piecemealing it together.
Any other input?
Well, and I don't, I guess I don't want to use the term piecemeal, but, I mean, I think that council would have, would have done the work that council did to develop the proposal and then present it to LNO, correct? And then LNO would review it and make their recommendations back to council? Would that be normally how we do it? I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't disagree. I guess I'm not sure what the urgency is to not do it the way we normally do. It's not required, but I, I mean, I do think it's standard, and I guess I'm unclear why we would do it one way today and a different way for something else. I don't understand what the emergency is. I know the emergency when we put this in place and why we did that, so that we could have good ordinances and do it properly. I guess I'm unclear what the urgency is to, to not take that step.
I think with this fairly straightforward step, in my opinion, that would just be I think with this fairly straightforward step, in my opinion, that would just be a unnecessary delay in allowing a business to conduct business. It's just a step in bureaucracy that we're, that we're putting there. It's just meeting for the sake of meeting.
So is it a step that we should always eliminate them? Because we normally don't eliminate it. I mean, in urgency, I think we could have something put together by the end of January and the business that wants to run this has never been here to promote it either. So I think it's, I think we should keep with our practice.
Other input or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny, that we do not, I don't know, I'd make a motion that we do not introduce ordinance and send it back, send it to LNO to vet it properly.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Now, with that being said, Bob, I do want to do this in an expedite fashion.
Yes, and I do think this could have been brought up at the last meeting when it was up for discussion.
I think we'll get this expedited and we'll try to get this taken care of as quick as we can.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number 12. Consider appointments to various boards and commissions. Earlier this evening, the council did meet in special session, interviewed a candidates for the Library Board and Convention Visitors Bureau. Based on that interview and for those that did attend that, the, I would recommend that Keith Petermeyer be appointed to a second term on the Convention and Visitors Bureau that will expire December 31st, 2026, and that Mike Fenske be appointed to a first term on the Library Board, again, that would expire December 31st, 2026. I'd offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm. I saw move.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And motion passes. Or excuse me, we'll close the voting. And now the motion does pass. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
I have nothing.
The amended?
Nothing to report.
The Southwest Regional Development Commission did have their regular monthly meeting at last Thursday and I was in attendance there. John?
MMU met this evening, but I was unable to attend.
See?
Nothing.
And?
Nothing.
We'll move then to the next agenda item, council member individual items. Greg?
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, hope it's safe and I hope people get to spend a lot of time with friends and family.
Thank you. Amanda?
I'll go back.
Jim?
Same thing, Happy Holidays and I do like how Ward Three is sporting the flannel today.
Right, absolutely.
See?
I am volunteering for United Way this Friday, two to four at Hy-Vee, bagging groceries. So come see me and donate to United Way.
Awesome.
And John?
See, do the eggs go on top or the bottom?
On the top, they're very fragile.
Okay, perfect, I'll let you bag my groceries.
Moving to staff reports, Sharon?
Mr. Mayor, I have no report.
Jason?
So city staff plans to apply for a MinDOT Aeronautics Equipment Grant before the deadline at the end of December. I didn't have a council item, but wanted to bring it up just so you're aware of our intent or you can redirect me if you don't want that to happen. But two pieces of equipment that we'd apply for a grant for, a skid loader replacement and then also a tractor with loader replacement at the airport. There'd be 70, 30 participating grants. I'll call this a MinDOT pop-up grant. It wasn't an established program. I think, seems like they had $2 million to get rid of, so they did a solicitation. If we get notice that we would be offered an award, we would have opportunity to come back to the council to discuss. Would be a non-budgeted equipment purchase, but that's where we're at with this grant popping up. The tractor with loader, we estimated around $130,000 after trade-in and the skid loader about $45,000 after trade-in. We'd be responsible for 30% of those costs. So without any other notice, we plan to submit for that. Other thing I'd note is the airport snow removal equipment building is out right now, being advertised for bids or available for bidding. So bid opening is on January 23rd, so we hope to get good bids, I guess. We've sent out notices to numerous prime and also not prime contractors, just to try to spread the word and hoping we, we hear good things. That's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. And Pam?
No report.
Do you or does Sharon want to talk about the HRA meeting that will be held?
Sure, I can. So there is a piece of property that was initially thought by staff to be owned by the city already and it was found during the title search by our firm that it was owned by the HRA, which also could be a political sub-divorce. And so the closing is still moving forward tomorrow. The closing company has decided to allow the closing to happen and then the meeting is going to be the next day with the HRA. So you've got an agenda packet and probably, then it was noticed today, which meets the three-day deadline for a special meeting to consider the resolution and the quitclaim deed from the HRA to the, to the city for that piece of property.
And there is a Zoom option for participation, but we do need a quorum.
So. On Friday.
By 11:30.
So with the Zoom option available and under the open meeting law, just one member of the body needs to be present, so the rest of you all can Zoom in if everybody can see and hear, as long as everybody can see and hear.
It should take less than five minutes. So just for planning purposes.
If there might be some people by Zoom, the voting feature, you'll probably have to do a roll call vote.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. You have the remaining items on the agenda, the cash investments, the listing of building permits as, which brings us then to agenda item number 20, the, which is consideration of the closed session. So I'd entertain a motion to go in the closed session to have an attorney-client protected discussion.
So move.
With the, with the Marshall Attorneys under Minnesota Statute 13D-05 subdivision 3B regarding litigation strategy and options for the city and Marshall Municipal Utilities pursuant to AFF multi-district litigation number 2873, MDL number 2873. And I read that because that does need to be included in any motion. So.
You still make the motion, Craig? I'll make the motion since Craig says, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? Now we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We will now go into closed session.